So when was that? Do you know when that culvert was replaced?
No.
No? Okay.
I could guess and I'd be wrong.
Counties should have information on that being a ditch line that's been there for years.
If it's a county ditch and a county culvert, they would, but if I remember right, it was actually a private culvert. So there's, I won't be held to that, but what I'm getting at is it's a gnarly issue with a whole lot of things to look at.
Sounds like it should be a county ditch.
Right, because it empties into the 12-mile crack.
Yeah, it goes into the 12-mile and onto the river. So it's a natural waterway from.
Not having much background on it, it's very hard to talk intelligently about it at this time, but it's going to be very complicated, I will say, they usually are.
I don't know about it.
Yeah. But message received, we will look into it. Like I said, I'm not seeing it glib. I'm really happy with the way Josh looks into these things, so we're on it.
All right.
I'd like to touch on, I'd like to touch on the fact that aside from any complaints, the city office has fielded. I've had a few residents down in Haywood. I just, I want to acknowledge that people from the Haywood area have reached out and said they have, they're not happy with the way the streets are deteriorating down there. They're not happy with, you know, potholes the size of five-gallon pails or whatever verbiage they were using, but I did drive down in there. I agree with them. There's been a few people that have reached out, and I was just hoping that Nick could touch on that point and just offer some response as to what are you waiting for yet from a quote standpoint to do a temporary fix, and then how far down the road, if you have it in your, if you have that handy, how far down the road is Haywood actually scheduled for any major repair?
Yeah, good question, Mr. Dieter. So somewhat in anticipation of this, I made a super brief PowerPoint. This is good, guys. We rarely go off script, but I try to be ready tonight. So I just put together a really high-level report. It's not too detailed. But to your point, unlike virtually every winter, we are in pothole patching and repair. That's kind of par for the course with the city. That being said, we are seeing more extensive deterioration in different parts of town. Haywood being one, Dutch Lake being another. There's a total road failure by Joe's Hardware. So again, at least right now, information, if not for the council, but for the greater community who's been asking a lot of these questions. And I think ultimately, this would be something that we'd get into a little bit deeper in May or June. Right now, we don't even have asphalt plants open to get good bid unit prices and so forth, and we need more feedback from you guys. So with that being set up on your screen, like I said, the actual issues in front of us today, as I said, Dutch Lake. We've had several engineers, several excavators, several different drainage people look at some of these issues. The unique thing is, you know, this is not a very old development. It's 20-plus or minus years old. We try to design and build roads to far exceed a 20-year life, and we're already seeing some of these issues. Specifically to Dutch Lake, there's just an incredible amount of settling to the point where the entire roadway, if you look at the curb and gutter, it's almost an inch or two higher than the roadway itself, which causes extensive drainage issues. In the past, we've done some patches and some fixes, throwing tar over it, but frankly, at this point, it's throwing good money after bad. It's just a more extensive fix is needed at this point. On Eighth Avenue and Haywood, Haywood in full, but the intersection that you just mentioned is rough. Eighth Avenue and Haywood, there's significant alligator, basically that kind of crackling throughout the entire pavement. There's huge potholes that patching will not do much of anything for. They'll wash out pretty quickly. And even throwing larger patches, like almost like a quilt over the roadway, might last a year or two, but it's not any sort of long-term fix. The last one, Ninth Street between Joe's Hardware and Munson Lakes, that sees an incredible amount of truck traffic from both Joe's and Munson Lakes. At this point, we're calling it a total pavement failure. We have pulled out something like six trucks in one-block stretch in the last week alone. We'll be scraping and putting down some sort of rock, but ultimately, Josh is looking at some different recommendations to bring back. This one, more than anything, frankly, since it does see so much truck traffic from those folks, we're looking at some sort of cost-share agreement because something needs to happen definitively with this one, and we'll bring that back as we receive that information. But for just kind of a quick cursory of where we're at, where we're going, in January, we did approve a 10-year capital improvement plan. That plan addressed street utilities, facilities, park planning, fleet and equipment. And I bring that up to say that that's still different than annual maintenance and budget items. We have annual maintenance allocations for patching, for seal coating, that sort of thing. I think the level of care that's needed for Haywood and Dutch Lake especially exceeds that annual maintenance amount, which is problematic because we also don't have the dollars for the bigger, which I'll get to in a second. Snapshot of that CIP, we have roughly $23 million in necessary public improvements to address over the following 10 years. Mind you, that hits on the general fund, which is, you know, basically funded by folks' property taxes. It also gets into enterprise funds, which are more of the utility bills that people pay on a monthly basis. Some big-ticket items that are included in that plan include a water treatment plant, street and utility work, and with that, I mean reconstruction. We've reconstructed about 65% of Howard Lake. This would be the remaining portions of town that have not been reconstructed, so that would also be excluding the areas like Haywood and Dutch Lake in that figure. We have about $4 million in facilities needs. And that last one, where we're talking about right now, we have about $2.1 million in necessary mill overlay reclaim, basically fixing the top wear coat of streets. Again, at this point at least, the marching orders that you as council have given staff, you want to maintain a relatively steady tax rate, and you do not want to raise utility rates. So as we looked at the next 10 years, we kind of staggered projects to retire debt, to get cash reserves built up, so that we're not seeing massive fluctuations to your levy, and we're not increasing our overall debt level. Right now on that timeline, what we're looking at is general pavement preservation. That's more of the annual budget items from 2019 to 2025. It actually extends a few years beyond that, but a lot more starts happening after 2025. That pavement preservation would include things like potholes, seal coating, and crack sealing. We currently have a new public works facility program for 2022, a new water treatment plant, and street reconstruction coming in 2024. And that last one, where we acknowledged right when we were passing it, mill overlay of most of these newer streets in 2026. We knew that was somewhat intentionally problematic, but I'll get to kind of some of the difficulties with that, reason being smaller projects are rolled into one. So Haywood, Dutch Lake, a lot of these areas would be considered one project at that time. And typically speaking, when you mobilize, consider engineering and project management on smaller projects, you're not really getting a good bang for the buck. Mind you, if the cash that we have on hand or the cash that we could put forward to it on an annual basis, you would see a block here, a block there, which really isn't the best use of dollars. This is a quick snapshot of how that looks. Again, it shows edge mill and overlay down in Haywood, edge mill and overlay in Dutch Lake, the two biggest areas in town. The red is the reconstruction area that needs to be totally rebuilt, and the rest is just the seal coat that we are doing as part of our annual maintenance. So looking at how we can address this problem a little bit sooner than what we're currently marching towards, some high-level alternatives that we'll bring back based on your input. Al?
Before you get off that, you have similar, you have mill reclaim and overlay, mill and overlay, edge mill and overlay. Then you have a little more description.
Yeah, so the typical mill overlay is really just taking the existing wear coat off, and it gets more extensive beyond that. So for example, what we did on Imhoff was a full reclaim and overlay. That went down to the subsurface where it reset that subsurface of class 5 and gravel, added to it, and then added a new road, like a new roadway on top.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the other?
The edge mill and overlay is basically when you do a little bit more extensive work near the curb and gutter to allow for the crown of the road to be more acceptable. That was not an option for Imhoff, for example, because you didn't have curb and gutter.
Right.
So that would be the significant difference there. Good questions. So again, high-level alternatives that we could consider now and moving forward to expedite the mill and overlay issues that we're seeing. First, complete smaller projects. Basically, every other year, every third year, something of the sort, we have a project somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $500,000. Frankly, that probably wouldn't buy you that much time from now until 2026, when you have that programmed in currently, which is why we didn't include that in your CIP. But that is something that you could consider where you do basically the worst of the worst now, or sooner. The second, I note this because this is a funding mechanism, and even though I'm going to say it, and I'm going to get nasty eyes from council and the community, another way to move up street projects is through voluntary special assessments. That's when the residents of a particular neighborhood or of a particular street section were to come forward and petition the city and say they are willing to pay for the vast majority, if not all, of that project. We know historically Howard Lake does not do special assessments for street projects. I shouldn't speak in terms of like political capacity, but given the fact that we've not done assessments to any sort of degree, excuse me, degree in the past, I don't see this having much traffic or traction, I should say. But that being said, if we show up tomorrow with 10 out of 10 residents on a block of road that said they're willing to pay for it, I would be willing to bet that you would also move that forward. So I'm making that noted as an alternative action. The last...
If you have one, I'd be surprised.
I agree. Honestly, I don't see much, I don't see much support for it. But again, I noted...
Because that's a question I'd like to ask. If you get, you're doing section after section after section, and you get to the last one, like maybe northwest quadrant, and you don't have it done, and it's falling apart, and you still haven't got it scheduled, expect them to come along and pay out of their pocket when none of the rest of the town has. It's totally out of line.
Yeah, so right now, we're kind of weighing two different classes of projects. One is a more extensive maintenance program of a mill and overlay of newer streets. Kind of the good and bad with that is it's all general fund-supported. It doesn't touch utilities. We're assuming that the utilities under the roadway of a subdivision that's 20 years old have a lot of life left where we don't have to get into that material and expense. In the case of that northwest quadrant where you hail from, that's going to take a total reconstruction. As of right now, our 10-year CIP accounts for all of that. You might not like exactly where it's listed in terms of priority and ranking, which is why we're having this discussion tonight, but we're at least accounting for a funding mechanism as of tonight that doesn't raise utility rates, that does not dramatically raise your tax rate as well.
How long since that quadrant has been utility-wise been replaced?
No idea.
Good point. Don't forget that. You don't know.
Yep. These were several, no disrespect, Mr. Munson, but these were several discussions that you were not participating in because you were gone. So I think for the purposes of tonight, let's focus on the mill overlay.
And we said that 20, you know, something that was 20 years old, you'd expect that everything below is good, but with the amount of settling and sinking that's happening in Dutch Lake, are we thinking that there could be other damage below?
So we have pretty good indication every time there's a property sale. Basically, we have an ordinance that requires the private line from a house to the street to be televised.
Oh, okay.
And so far, with all of those and newer parts of town, it looks good. Yeah. But good point. I mean, that's stuff that we'd look at as well. The last point that I want to take in terms of just alternative actions that you could consider, that's frankly the much more realistic one. We would swap the public works facility, which was programmed for 2022, with the mill overlay. Now, the good and bad with that, frankly, you'd move up the street work that we're talking about being needed today to 2022 instead of 2026. So you'd buy four or five years. Of course, there's other consequences that you consider. Public Works has literally been on hold since 2003, when we went out for bids and decided not to do it at that time. So it's not a new need. It's not different. It's only getting more extreme. And of course, the last one that I note, we've seen it with all of our projects to date, inflation for construction projects is far exceeding and far outpacing the cost of inflation for street utilities. So we might come to a case where you're going to pay more for both projects if you do it in that order. But that being said, that's probably the, excuse me, more realistic option to consider. So the bigger question for you guys, right now, your plan is to do almost nothing for several years. We will do our annual seal coating, annual pothole repair. That really does not get into the issues that we've been hearing from residents in Dutch Lake and Haywood especially. So with that in mind, we're at least pricing out some more extensive patch, like almost a mill overlay in small sections. Once we have that, we can bring that back, at least as a discussion point. Again, you'll see a, some sort of recommendation for Ninth Avenue with some sort of cost share attached because that road is done. Like, we need to take some sort of action with that soon. And then, of course, the last one is some sort of phased approach.
When do you think that we would see that put back in front of us?
I'm hoping that that will be at your next meeting.
I just know that there are certain people who are having rather difficult time getting into their driveway. You know, I mean, that's, going even down onto Haywood and Dutch Lake, I mean, around there where it's not a little dip in some cases. It's gotten bad. So I don't know. Got to figure something out.
Did that answer your question, Jason?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any others before we move on? Is there any direction that you do not want to see pursued at this point? Right now, like I said, very likely on May 21st, you're going to see bids for seal coating. That was planned before. Likewise, I'm pretty confident we're going to see something for Ninth Avenue as well, and hopefully just some sort of cost estimates to get your head around what it would look like to phase in some of these other areas.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Working on it anyway.
Thanks for the last-minute PowerPoint there.
All right. Thank you.
All right, so moving along. Council and committee reports, Parks and Planning Commission update. Jane, Jason?
Well, we kind of went over the PUD for the new development. We can kind of go into that when we discuss it a little further, I guess. I mean, that was really basically what we worked on at that meeting. Nice little development, I know.
All right. Any department reports?
No.
Consent agenda. First one is consider accepting all reports containing all claims. Approval of various personnel appointments. Approve of spring clean-up date as of May 4th, 2019, and approval of downtown revitalization grants. And consider resolution 13, or 1903, accepting donations from Howard Lake Lions. And consider approval for use of a public parking lot for Cinco de Mayo event. That's what's on the consent agenda.
Make a motion? Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I say aye. All vote. Motion carried. Item I, presentation of public hearing and related approvals. Public hearing for utility billing classification, commercial accounts. I'll turn that over to Aurora.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this agenda item is a follow-up from last month where we conducted a first reading of this ordinance. And this ordinance addresses several updates to our ordinance pertaining to utility fees and volume charges. So some of the proposed updates I'll get into in a moment, but I wanted to put a reminder to anyone listening at home and to anyone here, the reason these ordinance updates were brought up was because of the end of 2018, staff completed an audit of all our utility billing accounts, and that found that there were some inconsistencies. So we found that there were some properties that weren't being charged according to our fee schedule. Some, in some cases, there were sewer maximums put on accounts, so after a certain number of gallons, they wouldn't be charged an additional volume charge. Some base rates were set up incorrectly. So in some ways, some accounts were being charged too little, some were being charged too much. So in order to make sure that our billing practices are transparent, that they match our fee schedules, we thought that it was the best time to update the ordinance to make sure that those processes, those formulas are included, as well as then, once the ordinance updates are passed, then make the changes in our utility billing software to ensure that going forward, everybody is being billed equitably and according to our fee schedule. So a few of the specific changes that we're proposing to amend in our ordinance include creating a clear policy and formula for determining base rates, and this applies to non-commercial, I mean, to non-residential properties only. So in the cases where we did find inconsistent billing practices, it almost exclusively applied to commercial and multifamily and institutional properties. It did not affect any residential accounts. So something was happened when they set up these non-residential accounts, and so in order to make sure they're all billed fairly, we need to make sure that the formula for determining their base rates is documented and then applied to those accounts. The next, one policy that we've had for our residential accounts is that your sewer volume charges based on an average of the first three years, three months of the year, and that actually wasn't in our ordinance. It's been our practice, so we just want to make sure our practice matches our ordinance. So we propose that change. Additionally, we added language that accounts are considered to be delinquent and subject to certification if they're 60 days past due. We wanted to make sure that there was some confusion about if it was a $300 limit or if it was a time period, and it makes more sense to go by days of past due to be more fairly applied to different types of accounts. So we would propose that delinquency be defined as 60 days past due. Additionally, we would add language that shut-offs can be prevented if delinquent charges are paid or a payment plan is established. Another big change is that we would transition to twice-per-year assessments, and this would give the opportunity to instead of have accounts rack up balances that could potentially go the full year, to allow the chance for assessment mid-year and then towards the end of the year. Additionally, some issues we've been having with some accounts include meter readings not being submitted for extended periods of time, and this can cause issues, especially if there's a sale of property, which has happened several times over the last year. So we're proposing to allow a delinquent no-meter-read fee if no-meter readings have been submitted for more than 60 days, to ensure that people submit meter readings, so our billing can be accurate. Or, I'm sorry, after 90 days. We also removed the provision that the city would install remote meters if there was a lack of meter readings, because we don't have the technological capacity to do that. So it's not a practice we can do, so let's remove it. And finally, it adds language to clarify that property owners are ultimately responsible for utility bills, even if they have renters, because we want to make sure that they know that, you know, you're the owner, you're ultimately responsible, and you're responsible once the utility bill is processed. So you're immediately liable for that bill, just to make sure that there's protection for property owners versus residents and make that responsibility clear. So separate from some of these kind of administrative changes, we have sent letters to all account holders, because as we mentioned, this does affect about 40 accounts, about 5% of all our accounts that are commercial, industrial, multifamily. So we've notified all of them that, hey, there might be some changes to your account. This is what we anticipate would happen to your bill once these changes go into effect. So we've already had several of those meetings. We have another one coming up next week to discuss some of this further and make sure that everybody knows, you know, this is how, what we found on your account, these are the changes and why, and make sure that we have the best information from them, and they, you know, get the chance to voice any concerns and understand what's happening to their bill. But we still need to address our payment plan policy, which we plan to do in the next couple of months as well. So like I mentioned, we had the first reading of this ordinance last month. This is the second reading. So following the public hearing, if you move to approve the second reading, you would approve the ordinance with a 30-day enactment period, so it wouldn't go into effect until 30 days after it's been published. In terms of some of the financial changes, I guess I'll go into some of that as well. Again, of our 800 accounts, there will be almost no changes to the majority of them. Only about 40 accounts will notice any changes. But in some cases, like I mentioned, some will see slight decreases to their bills, some might see slight increases. But again, this is not because we're implementing any sort of rate increase. This is because the rates that were set up in some accounts did not match our current fee schedule. So that's where we'll see some of those changes. But based on estimates, we do anticipate that this will increase utility revenue, particularly to our sewer fund, because we know that there were caps on some sewer usage that we would be eliminating.
Caps meaning after a certain level of usage, we simply were not billing...
Charging additional volume fees. So by eliminating that, we would necessarily see more income into our sewer fund. So if there's any questions or public input, we take it at this time.
I think the one thing that I'll comment on too, that's not specifically part of this, we have spent a fair amount of time trying to decipher what a payment plan is. We have canvassed a lot of cities, and the answers are all over the place, and almost to the point that started a lot of this discussion with the certification of utilities last year with a rental property owner. That's still going to need some work. So like I said, or like Aurora said, you're probably going to see that in the next month or two. If you guys have initial comments or suggestions for us to stay away from or to look at, that's more than welcomed. Otherwise, look for that coming up.
All right, so moving on to new business.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, so now that this was considered a public hearing, at this point tonight, what we're looking for is the approval of the second reading of the utility billing ordinance. That's one motion. The second is a summary publication that would allow us to publish it in the newspaper in a much more abbreviated fashion.
Yeah, so that's kind of new business items, A and B that he's referencing. So approval of the ordinance 2019-1 is approval of the second reading of that ordinance in new business item A.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 10-1.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any vote? Motion carries.
Yeah, and then that new business item B is a summary publication, so that resolution contains a brief summary of some of these changes to the ordinance, so that way the full six or eight pages of the ordinance isn't published in the paper. And it gives a summary and allows people to context see how, if they want a full copy of the ordinance, we would provide it.
Okay. So can we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion on the publication of the utility billing ordinance, 10.01.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And now, new business?
Yep. Mr. Koots, if we could, maybe we could skip ahead to new business G as discussed.
New business G.
Thank you. So tonight, we have a few approvals related to the Villas of Howard Lake. This is the Patio Home Development next to the Lodge of Howard Lake. This is the patio home development next to the Lodge of Howard Lake. For quick background, can you folks, can you see what's on my screen or not? Okay. Hopefully, you looked at your packets. We'll talk in general terms then. There'll be two approvals related to frankly, the zoning as well as the preliminary plat. The Planning Commission held the necessary public hearing and made recommendations to approve the amended planned unit development language, which provides for the zoning necessary to accommodate the Villas of Howard Lake. The second action would be for the preliminary plat. So just again, I'll go pretty quick since you can't see what's in front of you anyway, right? As a background, we did pass a master campus plan for this back in 2013 at the time that the Lodge of Howard Lake was approved. At that time, they included twin homes and a childcare center in the exact same spot that we are discussing tonight. Ultimately, the only difference moving forward with this request versus the high-level concept plan that you approved in 2013 is acknowledging that it's standalone, single-family detached patio homes versus twin homes. In order to accommodate that, we have had to make revisions to our planned unit development that's onsite for the lodge to accommodate the patio homes. Ultimately, it's kind of a combination of our three and our six zoning districts, which allow for smaller parcels similar to the center of town, smaller setbacks to allow for a little bit larger develop or project on that parcel, as well as enhanced finishes on the exterior of the houses themselves. And again, it also accommodates the proposed childcare center if and when that moves forward. There's quite a bit of discussion at the Planning Commission level that went into some of the requirements that we discussed previously with the lodge, specifically placing age requirements on the development. That was debated back and forth pretty thoroughly, I think. And if councilors Gilbert or Dieter have comments on this, feel free to jump in. But ultimately, the question was market versus regulation, and they decided to go with the market solution, being that the smaller homes would likely prevent most folks of underage 55 or with larger families anyway. There wasn't a strong sense to regulate that. That was really the only thing that was discussed or deviated from on the staff report, but ultimately, it did go forward as presented. So tonight, we're looking for the approval of the planned unit development. Gene or Jason, do you have any comments to add from the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I was one of the folks that, I was concerned about the, being sensitive to our older population here, listening to resident Jerry Smith come in here and talk one time and sharing his concern and his passion. I just, I like the idea of having this facility, this, these villas for older people, you know, for seniors. And seniors are really, what, 55 and over?
Younger.
Younger people, thank you. So I just, I was, I was really, I'm really attracted to it, but I was also very concerned that there was going to be, you know, somebody wants a place to live, four kids are going to move in, eight dogs and a bunch of chickens or something out there. But what Nick said, the market material, instead of placing regulation on it, the market material, I believe Nick probably put it across a lot better than I could. But those folks that I'm concerned about, the younger, they're going to be in the new homes interning that is nearing capacity anyway, probably, or out at Lake Ridge or somewhere else. But I think the marketing material that's on this will drive that for 55 and over or whatever age it is. Well, the other, the other subject came up is, I mean, I have, I have, I mean, I don't know if this number is right anymore, but Howard Lake has a single-family homes at 30, we have a 30% rental rate. My concern is, is that are they going to become rental units? So I think Katie Huff had asked this question, are any of them supposed to be rental? And at first, I was like, I was cringing, I was thinking about that. But if you are somebody that is, let's say, up in age, you're, maybe you're 80 years old or whatever, and do you want to go through that buying cycle? Do you want to go through that selling cycle within a few years? Maybe you just want a place to rent for a few years, and that would, it'd make it a lot easier for those folks to be able to rent something. So kind of changed my mind about that whole deal, too.
And ultimately, that's a great point, I forgot about the, that part of it. There's a strong likelihood, I think, and we have Dave Pecorni of Community Asset Foundation here to address it as well, there'll likely be a couple of units that are rental occupied by design. But ultimately, this overall development of 12 patio homes really seeks to serve as a missing link in our overall housing continuum to specifically address and feed the Lodge of Howard Lake. So folks that are looking to downsize, maybe they need some but not all services of an assisted living facility, we have a spot that is intentionally located 50 feet away from that assisted living facility.
Have they even thought about which lots they're going to choose first? I'm just curious.
You're thinking already, aren't you?
No, I was just wondering, I was just looking at it, I thought, oh, where are they starting?
Will we comment about a couple of, do I, do I understand?
You do, you do.
So I'm Dave Pecorni, representing the Community Asset Foundation, who would be the partner, to what I see this, the partner with the city. Let me comment first of all, some of the specific questions on age. And I really go back to designing the building. So the units, villas, not patio homes, villas, are really going to be designed for that older couples. Two bedrooms, relatively small bedrooms, very nice open space, everything will be handicap accessible, 36-inch doors, flat, one-level living. And when you do that, you actually will exclude some of the market, and quite frankly, it's families. We, we will have deed restrictions, that you cannot put up a fence, you will not be able to go in and put a basketball hoop in your backyard. I mean, you know, the kind of things that would be just inconsistent with the whole vision. And I see, and again, so we got into this project really as part of our partnership with Good Samaritan Society, and Good Sam has developed a number of these types of projects adjacent to their assisted living care centers around their campuses around the country. So it's not like this is the first one that's been done. What they have done, though, in all of their cases, that at least I'm aware of today, they end up where they own them and they rent them to people. And we said, really, why? If that's an option, you can always create a rental situation. And that the, and they've done twin homes, which in some ways, a little more cost-effective to build, but quite frankly, in places like Howard Lake and Mountain Lake and Winthrop, where we've done projects, land isn't the issue that makes things costly. It might be in Sioux Falls. So even though you might save a little land, you, people don't really like the common wall, and especially people as they get older. So that's why we went to the detached, smaller, a small two-stall garage. We think the market is 70 and over. And people may, and I want to say may, choose to buy a service package initially, but they also may choose not to. And so we want to give them the option. So you may find people that say, you know, I'll use an example, I have a good friend, his wife has MS, she has really no issues today, they just moved into a very similar place like this, with the idea that someday, they're going to buy services, but they knew they were kind of settled. We may also find people that are there under the age of 55. If that happens, I expect it's going to be somebody, maybe it's a couple, might be a single person, who does have some issues of needs of services. And we can all kind of think of that 45-year-old who might be handicapped, and that's what they're really looking for, is a fully handicap, accessible unit, and have some ability that if they needed services, they'll be able to do that. So the, how we see the project evolving is, as we've been working on the plat and working with the city on the, on the, putting in the sewer and water improvements and an agreement on TIF, we've also been working with Good Samaritan on coming up with a package, what, so we can tell people if they want different levels of services, what will that be, what's the kind of cost can they expect, and we've been pushing them to have it be a wide variety. So it's really, I want this, but I don't want that. Secondly, we are not going to be the ones building the projects, but we've been looking to, for builders, and we have identified a builder, we have a letter of intent with them, where in essence, we're giving them the lots or whatever responsibilities we have under the development agreement, they're kind of assuming, and then we're putting some other conditions on them, where we, through the development, have some input on what the buildings will look like, how quickly they're going to put them up, and how it's going to relate to the lodge. Our interest in it is, well, first, I think, I hope on a big picture, our mission is to provide quality services to seniors in the community, but we also want to make sure that the lodge stays a viable entity. And this will be an enhancement, we believe, not really a competitor to the lodge. Our agreement that, our letter of understanding with the builder is that they will build initially a minimum of two units, one model and one that would be for sale, and then over the, they would have a maximum of four years to build out all 12. They, they will have the option to, if somebody comes in and says, I want to build two and have them be rentals, but then they're going to have to comply with a set of standards that the association documents will establish for rentals, so that all of the yard and common spaces will be maintained by the association. So snow plowing, yard maintenance, garbage pickup, that will all be part of an association fee. And then there will be a set of association documents that we're just kind of working through now. Relative to the daycare, we're not as far along with that, we're still kind of working with Nick, okay, here's the package we're going to go out to daycare providers with and convince them that this is a good market. That might be the more exciting of the two for what's going on out there, quite frankly. One of the very first projects that we were involved in with a 62-unit assisted living in Waconia, that has attached to it a 200-child daycare. It was done more for economic reasons than it was the idea of intergenerational. Both the senior provider, the service provider, and the daycare provider were kind of hesitant. Today, both of them would say, anytime we could create daycare and seniors together, we want to do it. It's been very successful intergenerationally. We have a project, one of our, one of our other sites, we're actually working on adding a daycare to it as we speak, and then this one. So we think it really enhances the assisted living, because quite frankly, if there's a, this site in Howard Lake, if there's a negative, it's a little bit on the fringe of town. I mean, if we all would have, you know, and we talked about this back when we did it, if we could have found a site that was really kind of more right downtown, it might have been better. Because seniors that are in assisted living don't want to feel like they're on the edge of town, they're not being put to pasture. And the housing that's going on out there, that'll help it, a daycare would help it, just making it more of a place. So we're really excited about it. I can tell you, the builders saying, you know, tell me my schedule when I can break ground. And so we're trying to work through a development agreement that'll let them in there as soon as they can. And conditions that came out of the, on the preliminary plat, we're fine with all those, we're working up the response to them now. We would hope very shortly, we'll be back in with a final plat.
What's the average square footage of the single-family homes on the turning now?
They're, I believe, 1,300 or 1,400 square feet finished, but that does not touch the baseline.
These are 11, roughly?
Yes. Yep. So I think we're going...
Taxes, I'm kind of headed down the taxes road.
Yeah, so good question. So kind of the comparisons between the Villas project that we're talking about here and what we're seeing with the development at Churning Trails with the other single-family homes built by Paxmar. These homes here, we estimate to see somewhere around the estimated market value of $200,000 and about 1,100 square feet. That could be a little bit lower, that could be higher, depending on finishes, on number of bedrooms and that sort of thing, but that's the target that we're looking at for the villas. If you move over a half a block to Churning Trails proper with the single-family homes of Paxmar, those are about 1,400 square feet, plus or minus, with an average valuation or starting point of 180. A lot of those homes add stuff, just like we're talking about here, to get it closer to that $200,000 price point as well. But as we've discussed, different markets almost entirely would be looking at these two products. Almost all of the Churning Trails homes by Paxmar are split-level, which obviously, the villas are not.
I tell you, I mean, our, the builders, and again, I'll focus on the one that we're going to work with, that is one of their concerns, can we really, are we above the market? As they've looked at it, I think they've concluded that that 200,000 is going to be fine. In my, where I do this for, and make money, some of that other consulting, I have worked with this particular builder and that have developed these higher-end villas that are 20, two floors, 25 to 3,500 square feet, we've probably developed 100 of them. And what we've found is that almost every one is 100% finished at really high levels, because that's what seniors want. And I expect that same thing is going to happen with these. The details of finishings and interior will be very nice, they won't be extremely large, because seniors, space, square footage is not important to them. Spaces are. For example, they do not want big, large bedrooms. They want two bedrooms, they want two baths, they want those to be nice, they want a walk-in shower, they want the dining, kitchen and living room to be a one great room, and it better be designed so that when I have my 10 people over for dinner for Thanksgiving, maybe even 15, there's some way I can fit them in there. They do not want two levels. They want enough storage, but not the same kind of things to store that a family does. I was surprised, I toured the facility, this complex that Good Samaritan has in Sioux Falls, all have two-stall garages, and I think at least half of them either had a boat or some kind of recreational vehicle in one of the two stalls. So these might be older people, they're not necessarily, they tend to be active people, okay? they're not necessarily, they tend to be active people, okay?
Yeah, and I can say even more directly, at the beginning of this conversation, I was slightly apprehensive over that same market question, like, do we have the market to support that high of a price point at that small of a footprint? I think as this project moves forward, is gaining more interest, I just got an email yesterday from someone that sold their house, and they're waiting to move into this house, like, it's that, it's that level.
You better send me their name.
I did.
Okay, oh, okay.
So to the point where, right now, we haven't even broke ground, but I think probably upwards of half of these are probably spoken for, one way or another.
Actually, one of the changes that we made through the planning commission process, and one of the variances under the PUD is the side yard setback at five feet. We show our base plan at 10-foot, but we wanted the ability to go to five because we think there will be a few of the units, or people are going to come in and say, well, this is exactly what I want, but can you do 1,600 square feet? Can I upgrade to that? And we want to bill, say, yeah, we can do that. So the, it may not be, because, not fully convinced of this yet, but the realtors are telling us, price isn't an issue as much to people over the age of 70 as it is to somebody 35. There's a certain plan that they want, there's a location that they want, and if they can have that, then price, okay, it's negotiable.
It's an exciting project. Ultimately tonight, two, two separate actions, one is the zoning language, which is that first, first one of, consider the ordinance establishing a PUD for the Villas of Howard Lake. Again, that would match the language that's within your packet, revised setbacks to Dave's point, enhanced exterior finishes. So we'll kind of take them one at a time. Is there any questions before we move forward?
Did I hear you write those 1,600 square foot, one level?
Well, not yet, not old enough.
On a little lot.
That's big. 1,600, yeah.
Yeah, that would be big. Okay, so basically for G, consider ordinance establishing a PUD for the Village of Howard Lake, need a motion?
Correct. I'll make a motion approving ordinance establishing a PUD for the Villas of Howard Lake.
Motion, is there a second?
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both opposed, carry. So then move right to H?
Yep. Which is ultimately just allowing a summary publication of a shorter notice to the newspaper.
Okay. I'll look for a motion for, consider publication of ordinance 19, amending PUD for Turning Trails development.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And, consider resolution 1906, approving preliminary plat for Villas of Howard Lake.
Yep, and this one, just a little bit more, because we focused primarily on, on the zoning so far tonight. This is the preliminary plat, this would be the first step, a final plat would go before you at a later date. This calls for the creation of 12 parcels. Again, Josh, you can jump into, but ultimately, the preliminary plat as presented is fairly solid. The items that we've addressed through staff review, as well as through the planning commission, really just ensure that there's proper easements for trails, as well as sidewalk connections, that link the single-family homes being built by Paxmar to this area here and out around the lodge. The other adjustments are acknowledging a slightly longer roadway for that cul-de-sac, just acknowledging that that's what's being built, it's somewhat contrary to our standard zoning language, by 50 feet or something like that, I think. I can't think of any other substantive changes. Josh, did you have anything else?
The only other one was, obviously, there's a few contingent items on the final plat, but from a preliminary plat level, they're not necessary at this time. And that includes the wetland.
Yep.
I think a landscaping plan, was there a tree preservation one as well?
Yep, that's included in the PUD itself, not in the plat. Yep.
All right, so with that said, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make the motion, resolution 1906, preliminary plat Villas of Howard Lake.
I'll second.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, carry. All right.
I'm going to start.
So, moving along.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Let's get going on the rest.
Okay, so, we already took care of A and B.
Yep. So we'll move on to new business item C, consider the revised regulations and hours of operation for the compost site. Council, if you remember, we discussed some issues at the compost site at the February council workshop, and so part of that discussion was centered around just basically the increased use that we've seen at the site over the last several years. We used to only chip the site every, every few years, it could be several years, but we have ended up having to chip it the last two years, and seeing significant amount of material each time. And we anticipate that this is for a variety of reasons, one of those being that we're seeing extremely large loads dumped off, dumped all at once, so that likely indicates that it's township use or use by commercial tree trimmers, because there's simply not enough material on one residential property that would produce that much at the compost site. Additionally, we know that there's an issue because we have left the compost site open dawn to dusk every day, and essentially unmonitored, so if a commercial hauler is dumping in a lot of material, there, we wouldn't necessarily be able to stop them, or know who is doing it. On the third, we have noticed that there are some security issues with the site, we know for a fact, it's already happened even this year, people going the back way around and dumping things illegally, so there's obviously some issues that need to be corrected, and some of those, we wanted to make sure, we got your feedback at the workshop, but we wanted to make sure that we had a council action item to officially approve some of those changes. So specifically, what we're looking to change is to keep the site for Howard Lake, City of Howard Lake residents only. So no longer allowing any commercial use of the site, or township use of the site. We know that the Wright County offers a compost and recycling facility that township residents can use as well, and so we would encourage people to go there, to make sure, just because we can't keep up with the amount of material we're seeing. And second, we are moving to limit some of the open hours. We would still keep the compost site open nearly every day from dawn to dusk, but close only Tuesdays and Thursdays, and that would make sure that staff can get in there, move material around, get it out of the way, sort things if they're put into the wrong piles, and have a better chance to check in with the compost site more regularly, keep it maintained, and be able to address any security issues, or cleanup, or illegal dumping at that time. So those are the substantive changes that the public would notice to the operation of the compost site. Just to kind of give other notes about some of these changes that we're hoping to improve and manage the site better, we plan to install new signage at the site, that would list the updated hours, it would have correct contact information, so they can contact the city if there's any questions, it would better list which materials are accepted, which ones are specifically prohibited. So for example, we only accept grass clippings, leaves, yard waste, and tree branches and brush, but we do not accept tree stumps, garbage, plastic bags, anything that's not going to decompose kind of naturally, should not go to the site. But we, not, not only have we ordered signs, we also added a full page on our city website as well, that also contains this information, as well as provided links to the Wright County facility as well, in case people have other materials that they need to dispose of that we just don't accept, or if they're township residents perhaps looking at our site, and then they'd be able to know exactly where they can go to dispose of their compost materials. Also, just as a reminder to the community, because I know we've been getting a lot of questions as staff, a lot of questions about the site, the site is only open seasonally, and we anticipate to open it, you know, weather permitting, typically late April, early May, and then close it late October, early November. So depending on, you know, how rainy or snowy our spring is, determines when we can open the site for the, for the year, like, for instance, right now it's still closed, especially with this last patch of weather we had, it's very muddy out there, so we will post on our website and Facebook and make sure that people know when the site is, is open again for the year, and same on the back end when it closes for the year, so that way people know when they can start and stop taking material there. We're also correcting, Google Maps apparently had incorrect information about our site, so we've reported that to Google, and I think it's all correct now, but just wanted to put a reminder, if you ever have questions about the compost site, check our website, call city staff, that's where you can get the best, most up-to-date information. So that, those are kind of the main changes we're proposing. Additionally, following this, some things that aren't necessarily a council action, but things that we're doing as staff to continue to improve the security of the site, of the site, is to look into installing a camera, to try and decrease the illegal dumping issue, as well as changing the locks and working with Mumford on security of the site, to make sure when it's closed, it's actually closed. So, for your consideration tonight, I just wanted to get a motion to approve that the site is for residents only, and that we would change the open hours to be done through dusk, Monday through Sunday, with the exception of Tuesdays and Thursdays, when it's closed for maintenance.
So what are we doing about them having the ability to drive around that backside yet, though?
Yeah, so, I can already tell you, we've purchased an additional lock for that side, with a heavier chain, but most, almost exclusively, the issue is we're going to have to meet with Mumford's on the use of that site, because they primarily secure that piece into it.
Yeah, and very likely...
Because I think I drove through there, and there was nothing even there.
That's, that's exactly where I was going, I think very likely we'll need fencing if you want to completely close it off. The arrangement that we have with Mumford is very agreeable, it's a very low-cost lease, but it's also a very no-frills lease, so I'd anticipate that any upgrades or improvements to the site would likely be put back on the city.
Yep.
I have a question. So, can businesses, if you're inside the city, can like, Contra's Co. use it or not?
Yeah, so historically, it's been open, open door.
But we bring branches, but we don't bring stumps to it like that, so...
And fundamentally, Kathy, what we're trying to get ahead of with this is frankly, just abuse above and beyond, like, a typical yard maintenance. We've had cases where Monday morning, we come onto the site, and it's 12 trees, and it's clearly from one load. It's pretty rare that 12 fully grown trees exist on a residential parcel period, and like, we'll address in this next agenda item, previously, we didn't really have a big financial consequence to it, and now we're spending anywhere from $6,000 to $10,000 to address that. So they can weigh in on this, but as far as I'm concerned, it would still be open to, like, use specifically in other resident, business residents in town?
No fish, guys, so...
Do you have a hut for that? You can keep it?
Okay, so we'll look for a motion to approve the revised regulations and hours of operation for the compost site.
I'll make the motion. To approve the revised regulations and hours of operation for the compost.
First, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Consider approving contract for chipping services for City Compost Site.
Another compost site matter, so just kind of what we were discussing, you know, we've seen that with the amount of material, we've had to start chipping the brush pile every year, and especially the last two years, we've had extreme difficulty lining up, A, finding vendors that are able to chip our pile, and then, two, being able to schedule them. So, this year, we were finally able to secure Sylvester Custom Grinding, they came out early February, and chipped the brush pile, and they offered to extend our 2019, the pricing for 2020 and 2021. So they would propose to keep our pricing, the volume pricing the same, and schedule to come out every January, to do it for the next two years. So, given the trouble we've had securing vendors, and especially scheduling them, having someone who would keep our pricing consistent, and have us already scheduled for the next two years, is something that we think would help make sure that the compost site stays maintained every year, as well as, I mean, we were happy with the service that they provided this past January, so, you know, we recommend the vendor. So, we think that signing an annual contract would help prevent maintenance delays, and would just make sure that we attend to this issue every year for a fair price. So, the city previously paid about $4,000 when the pile was shipped in 2017, early in 2019, we paid about $6,500, so depending on the amount of material, we'd anticipate to budget about that same amount for the next couple of years, to, as basically annual maintenance of the compost site.
So now, I noticed here that they said that they would haul all the stuff away?
Yep.
I know we've talked in the past of leaving a pile for residents to take from.
Yep, and so we've done that this time as well, so they're totally agreeable to leave any amount onsite that we request essentially, because, I mean, it's their expense to haul it away, so they're comfortable leaving whatever we ask of them.
All right, so, I'll look for a motion then to consider approving the contract for chipping services for the City Compost Site.
I'll make a motion to approve tree grinding contract for 2020 and 2021.
First, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E, consider purchase of truck for Public Works Department.
Yes, so, another CIP-related item before the council again today. As was mentioned, last year, when a Public Works truck was purchased, just to give you an idea of our equipment replacement schedule, our Public Works vehicles are on a 10-year replacement schedule in the CIP to minimize our repair and maintenance, and maximize our resale value. The oldest truck we have is a 2006 Chevy, and this is our oldest pickup, it has over 71,000 miles, it has a crumbling interior, and has more significant repairs, but I would note that it was originally due to be replaced in 2016, 2017, but we opted to delay that and replace a 2007 Chevy in 2018, because it was experiencing significant wear, so we postponed this replacement to replace another one earlier. So, we recommend placing, replacing this 2006 Chevy as it's, you know, past its 10-year replacement schedule, but also because this was planned and budgeted for as part of our 10-year capital improvement plan. As for the, what we propose to replace it with, two of our three Public Works trucks are now GMCs, and so we recommend replacing a Chevy with a 2018 GMC Sierra, which is similar to the other vehicles in our fleet. We propose switching from Chevy to GMC, one, to just keep all the makes of our vehicles consistent, which makes it easier in terms of maintenance, as well as keeps a consistent look, so you can kind of tell that that's a city truck. So we, this year, there happened to be no state bid option for GMCs, there was only one bid option for pickups at all so far this year, so instead of going through the state bid like we did last year, we reached out to two separate dealerships to get comparable pricing, and that's what's before you tonight. In terms of the trade-in value, the 2006 Chevy's estimated to be worth about $6,000, so instead of trading in the vehicle, when, but instead of trading it in when we... So, um, instead of trading in the vehicle when, but instead of trading it in when we purchase, we have a need for this truck potentially for the summer for use with our seasonal employee. So what we've discussed as staff, it might make more sense to sell it in the fall, after we are down from four employees to three, to sell it at that time, rather than selling it right at the trade-in. So to give you an idea of the financial impact, um, again, like I mentioned, the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-eight CIP budgeted, um, thirty thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars for the replacement of the truck. We did, um, receive two estimates, um, to purchase the twenty eighteen GMC, and it came in under budget with the lowest bid at twenty-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars. Um, there will also be some license fees and some taxes, but that's, um, what, what's pretty typical anytime we purchase a vehicle. Um, so the motion we'd be looking for tonight is really two-part. One, to approve, um, the purchase of the truck, and then the second would be to authorize, um, the sale of the two thousand six Chevy. So if there are any questions, be happy to answer those.
So just make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Purchase the new twenty eighteen GMC Sierra and to authorize the sale of the two oh six Chevy.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Consider purchase of mosquito sprayer.
Alrighty, so this is the second CIP-related item before you tonight. Um, the city mosquito sprayer is in need of replacement. Our current sprayer is, um, about fifteen years old, um, and it's definitely at the end of its useful life and is increasingly in need of repairs. Um, it suffers a lot of breakdowns throughout the summer, and in fact, two summers ago, it was out of service for about two weeks because it had to be completely rewired. So we, we've kind of known this has been an issue, um, but again, we were kind of waiting until we had a full CIP established to make sure we prioritized what equipment we were replacing when. Um, so I asked staff to go out and look at what type of sprayer we should be replacing this with. Um, our current sprayer is a nine horsepower, and it's recommended both by staff and the manufacturers for what we use it for, that we upgrade to an eighteen horsepower. I mean, that's pretty, that's the most common size that they sell of mosquito sprayer. Um, and what I think makes the most sense for us is that we can use it at twice the speed that we currently do. Um, the, the amount of, um, fogging that it does as it drives by is three times more intense, so instead of driving at ten miles an hour, you can drive at twenty miles an hour. So, um, that's a pretty significant change, that it allows us to go a little quicker.
Well, I'm, I'm only making this little snickering noise because every once in a while, someone will say to me, "They need to slow down." So when you said it'll go faster, I thought, "Oh, okay."
Let's focus on effective, the, uh...
Yeah.
Faster than thirty.
Yeah. The actual dispersment, like, we saw video clips of this, it's the difference of, like, a single candle versus a forest fire. It's really impressive.
I know it's much, it's much better, it's just that...
Yep.
That speed thing.
Yep, um, so, I mean, this would technically be an upgrade in size than what we're used to, but it's only about a difference of about two thousand dollars, and we know that it has, and it's a lot more effective in its application, it can be used, um, more efficiently. Um, in terms of our current sprayer, its trade-in value, um, from the manufacturer is about, is about five hundred dollars. We think we can probably get more of that, more than that if we out, sell it outright, um, maybe a thousand dollars plus. So we'd propose, instead of trading it into, um, a manufacturer to sell it on, um, via estate auction. In terms of the CIP, again, this was another anticipated and budgeted expense, um, and it was budgeted for twenty nineteen. Um, we received, um, two bids for this, and it came, they came in under budget with the lowest bid at nine thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars from Mosquito Control of Iowa. So again, what we're looking to do is authorize, um, the purchase of this eighteen horsepower mosquito sprayer, as well as authorize the sale of our old mosquito sprayer. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
And, and where are these serviced out of? Long Lake, is that it, or... And no other special equipment as far as the truck is concerned, same, it just mounts the same in the truck or the trailer?
Yeah, we mount it to the, uh, the same trailer, yep.
All right, I don't have anything.
I'll make a motion to purchase the new mosquito sprayer and to sell the used one.
I'll second.
A motion and a second? Any further discussion? I'll look for a motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Old business, there's none. Administrators report, nothing?
No.
So I'll look for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, I have a second.
G now for the win.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.